Welcome to the Oshkosh City Council portion of the Candidates Forum presented by the League of Women Voters of Winnebago County and Oshkosh Community Media Services, Television City Cable 10. This event is also being simulcast on W O C T 101.9 FM, Oshkosh Community Radio. This forum may be accessed via video streaming on Oshkosh Community Media Services website at www.oshkoshcommunitymedia.org or on their YouTube channel. I am Frankie Mengling, Vice President of the Winnebago County League of Women Voters, your moderator. Joining me on the panel for this forum is League of Women Voters member Margie Davy. Incumbent candidates for City Council are Kyle Clark, Steve Cummings, and Steve Herman. Challengers are Dan Becker, Paul Esslinger, and Carolyn Pansky. The term of office for Council members is two years. The timekeeper will give you cues, and we thank you in advance for keeping your answers within the time limit and on the issue topic so that we may cover as many issues as possible. Audience questions are welcome. Please submit in writing to the League representative. We begin with two-minute opening statements. Tell us about your qualifications, why you are seeking election to the City Council, and we'll do this in alphabetical order, beginning with Dan Becker.
Thank you. I'd like to begin by thanking the League for conducting this evening's event and for hosting it. My name is Dan Becker. My wife and I have lived in this community for over 20 years. I also have a son that's now a freshman at UW Madison. Been a small business owner in this community for in excess of six years. Additionally, I've served for six years on the Oshkosh Area School District Board of Education as their Facilities and Finance Chairman, a number of other committees as well as a representative, so I do have some experience in municipal government prior to my run for Oshkosh City Council. From a city perspective, I do currently serve on the traffic -- excuse me, the city's Traffic Review Advisory Board, just tripping over my own tongue here this evening apparently. Also served on the city's Museum Board as well. With all these experiences, I have a diverse point of view, which I intend to bring to the Oshkosh City Council. I'm very interested in protecting Oshkosh's future. I'm especially interested in taking the city back to the basics. We've lost sight of the definition of needs versus wants in this community. I want to emphasize the importance of citizen voices in this process by restoring unlimited and unfiltered citizen statements during meetings, lifting, if you will, the gag order that was placed on citizens by the City Council. I also focus my energy on searching for new and innovative -- excuse me, innovative ways to control costs, limit fees, okay, redefine taxes as they've been defined by the City Council, and strive to make Oshkosh the first choice when people look to move to the Fox Valley. I would appreciate your support on April 1st.
Mr. Clark?
Hi. My name is Kyle Clark. I am currently an appointed representative on the Oshkosh Common Council. I enjoy my service to the community and have been active in this community as I have lived here my entire life. The current priorities that I have include economic development and infrastructure development. Economic development is key to growing our tax base to make sure that everybody's rate stays low. Our continued successes on the riverfront and in our industrial parks are important to continue to grow the city of Oshkosh. While doing this, it is important to manage the city's debt to make sure that we are not passing a burden on to our future. All of my priorities revolve around making the city a great place to live, work, and play. If we can instill that sense of community by protecting our housing stock, building businesses, and maintaining our services, we will continue to grow and be a wonderful city. I look forward to continuing, hopefully continuing to serve in the role that I have on the Oshkosh Common Council and continue to be a part of the community in the city government and through service organizations outside. I thank you for your time, and I thank the League for promoting this event, and I hope for your vote on April 1st. Thank you.
Mr. Cummings?
Thank you. I too would like to thank the League for hosting this event and those of you who are watching it here or at home. Again, my name is Steve Cummings, and I'm seeking my third term on the Oshkosh City Council for a number of reasons. The first is my passion for the city of Oshkosh, its past, its present, and its future. I've lived here all my life, as has my wife. We're both, we are both the fifth generation of our families to call Oshkosh home. In June of this year, we will welcome our first grandchild. I want to make sure he grows up in a dynamic and progressive community, as he will be the seventh generation of our family to call Oshkosh home. What I want for him and all the citizens of Oshkosh is unlimited job opportunities and an unbeatable quality of life. My second reason is a desire to give back to the community that has been good to our families in so many ways, especially the quality of education we received and the opportunities afforded us. I currently serve on the Plan Commission, Landmarks Commission, I'm a board, on the Board of Directors of the Winnebago County Historical Society, the Oshkosh Zoological Society, Evergreen Manor Village, and also on the Board of Directors of Nabork's Badgerland. Oshkosh has been a great place to live, work, and play, and will get even better in the years ahead because it is heading in a very positive direction after years of stagnation and self-doubt. Third reason is a desire to lead the city into the future and continue working on the many programs I helped initiate the past four years and those that are just in the planning stages. And I thank you for your vote and looking forward to serving you for another two years.
Mr. Esslinger?
Thank you. I also would like to thank the League of Women Voters and OCMS for hosting this forum, and I'd like to thank all of you by being involved, by listening to all the candidates. I served on the council for 11 years and felt it was an honor, and it was very rewarding, so I would like to have that opportunity to serve again. I feel the present council rarely, if ever, debates the issues at council meetings and always votes seven to zero on the issues. I think there should be more debate with the issues. I would do what I did when I served on the council previously in the past, be an analytical thinker, review all sides of the issues, listen to the citizens, and vote in the best interest of Oshkosh. I'm also running because I think I would like to see a solution to our debt situation. The city is currently $140 million in debt, and we have millions more in unfunded liabilities that will have to be paid for on the horizon. Currently, there is no plan of action to deal with this serious problem. I would like to be on the council to work with the staff and council to solve this problem. It seems every year the council asks taxpayers to spend millions of dollars on, quote, "quality of life" issues. I'm sure you've heard that phrase before, and you'll probably hear it again tonight. Most of the time, this term is used to try to quantify projects that the private sector cannot and will not undertake because they would never make money. And because the council votes in favor of these quality-of-life issues, they then look at cutting police or firefighters to try to balance the budget at the end of the year. Unfortunately, the quality-of-life projects that the council votes for has the potential of jeopardizing our lives. As a council member, I will fight to make sure our real quality-of-life issues are funded first, not last. What is extremely important in our representatives is that they listen to your concerns. I promise that if you vote for me, I will listen to your concerns. We may not always agree, but you will be heard. Thank you for listening, and I would ask for your vote on April 1st.
We move next to Mr. Herman.
Thank you. I'd like to thank the League and OCMS for sponsoring this forum and for the other candidates for coming out tonight. When I ran, I'm completing my second term on the Oshkosh Common Council. When I first ran and was elected in 2010, I ran on common sense, fresh ideas, and reduced wasteful spending. I think we've done that as a city and as a city council. I also pride myself in looking at a common sense approach to ideas and bringing fresh ideas to those common sense and building partnerships, public-private partnerships. This year, we've already worked with Winnebago County to purchase land and to start an aviation industrial park. We need to grow our economic development. We need to grow businesses to come into our community. We have a school referendum coming up. I think it's important that we support our school board and our school districts by whatever fashion we can do that, so I think that's also important. I think that we are looking at our debt seriously. Mr. Esslinger brought up that issue. It is a goal for the city manager in 2014 to develop a three- to five-year plan to reduce the city's general obligation debt to approximately 70% of equalized value. So we do have a plan in place to deal with some of these rising issues. We need to continue to work on our stormwater problems we have in the city so that our streets don't flood. We need to continue to improve our infrastructure. We need to continue to work on building Oshkosh to be a great community. So I believe that I can bring that to the table. I have issues that I take seriously. We get our questions answered ahead of time so that on the night that it comes to me, we can run it like a Board of Directors, like I believe the council should be. So I hope for your support April 1st. Thank you very much.
And our last speaker is Ms. Pansky.
Well, good evening. Thank you for having me. Basically, my interest in common council began as being a member of this community. I was born and raised here, graduated from high school here, and I'm raising my children here. I want to ensure that they enjoy this community as much as I have, not only now, but in my childhood. I do feel that there is a problem with the budget. I would like to look closer at that. Hopefully, once I do get on the common council, I can go forward and dig a little bit deeper. As a normal citizen with no political background, I feel that I can offer the voice of the community, of my neighbors, of my family, of my friends. I want to have conversations with people. I want people to call me and question my motives and what's going on. I feel that there is a real need for a greater education of our local government in this community, and I want to thank the League of Women's Voters for putting this together. I think this is just fantastic. I was not aware that this organization was here, and that's absolutely unacceptable as a citizen. You know, we should know that these programs are here, so there is a need for greater education of our local, of our local government. I feel like I can bring that to the table. Thank you.
I think the League is 100 years old. And there are days when I feel like I was a founding member. But thank you for mentioning that. Our, that question was sent to our panel members, our candidates earlier, and they were also sent this question. Cities are complex entities. Citizens have diverse and varied views. Not everything can be done at once or in a way to satisfy everyone. On your to-do list for the city of Oshkosh, what are the top two or three priorities as you see them, and why these priorities? And you have two minutes, and we'll start in reverse order with Ms. Pansky.
Okay. Well, once again, the budget would probably be my top priority, looking at those things. I consider myself to be very thrifty. As a single mother with two children, I kind of have to be, so I can offer that to the community to take a look at what we are spending our tax dollars on and hopefully do that in a more responsible fashion. The second thing that I would work on would be to revitalize our neighborhoods. I know that there is a lot of movement in this area, but I feel that we don't know our neighbors anymore. We don't sit and talk with our neighbors. We don't have those conversations. I actually purchased the house next door to my parents, so I know my neighbors very well. My children, bother them every single day, you know, and that's how it should be. I feel very safe in my neighborhood. We take daily walks. I walk with my children to school. I know the faces in my neighborhood, and that should be something to strive for. I think that would reduce a lot of the problems we have just by opening up communication and shaking hands with, with our neighbors and our fellow community members. So I look forward to working with a few of the people on this panel, and thank you again for having me.
Mr. Herman, your to-do list.
My to-do list, okay. I think we need to continue the development of our riverfront. Over the years, we've had visions, we've had plans, we've had ideas, and we don't move them forward. We now have the North Shore done of the riverfront. It's, it's being used, it's available for our citizens, so I think now we're working on the South Shore, so I think we need to continue that. I also think we need to give smart growth principles priority. As, as citizens see the central garage being built, that has all types of lean, energy-saving things to make that garage much more efficient and working, so we need to continue to look at that as we move forward. I also think we need to find the right mix with community partners. We need to work closer with our border townships, towns of Black Wolf, Nakaimai, Algoma. We need to work closer with them to develop our economic development. They currently don't have any industries in the townships. We have nothing to bring buildings and, and industry into our communities, so we need to work with our townships in Winnebago County like we are. Improve our infrastructure, continue that. We've been on a very aggressive path for the last five, six years, which was what the citizens asked for, as it's been talked about, our budget and our, and our debt. We have to take the gas off the pedal a little bit, but that doesn't mean we can't continue to improve on our infrastructures. And then we need to continue to promote the positive attitude, the can-do attitude that, that has been instilled in the city the last few years. Instead of saying no, we say, how can we do it? How can we work better? How can we work better for our citizens and continue to move forward? I also think we need to look at cost-effective and efficient means of providing services to our citizens. How can we do that better and more efficient? The importance of the neighborhood revitalization through the Great Neighborhood Program. We had a workshop just this week talking about the Middle Village's plan and how that's going to improve their neighborhood and their quality of life. The school district, as I mentioned earlier, offer the highest education possible. Why do people come to Oshkosh? So these are some of the things that I want to work on in the next two years. Thank you.
Mr. Esslinger, your to-do list.
Thank you. Priority number one for me would be to restore free speech to the council. At the August 13th, 2013 council meeting, the council passed a resolution that I have here that was a paragraph long outlining what citizens can and can't say at a public forum. It appears that the council enacted this because a citizen came to a meeting a month or so earlier and asked a counselor about some uncomfortable but appropriate issues, something a citizen should have the right to ask a council member. Many people expressed to me that they felt this new rule was disrespectful. As a former mayor, I know that the mayor has the ability to gavel someone down or have them removed if they misbehave or if they're off-topic. If elected, I would like to have this language removed. As I alluded to in my opening statement, the threat of cutting firefighters and police officers to balance a budget must be off the table. If a city can't fund the appropriate amount of police and firefighters, then the council or city staff is doing something seriously wrong. I think that government needs to focus on the core areas first, those areas being police, fire, streets, and infrastructure. Threatening citizens with understaffing in these areas is irresponsible. The council needs to seriously look at the fees that we charge. When I was on the council, I asked the staff to have the finance committee look at our fee structure and if our fees were reasonable. The request was either ignored, or the finance committee never did anything with it. The council just passed a $20 recycling fee, better known as a tax. A referendum with this question was voted down 70 to 30 a few years ago. Is the council in touch with the citizens by passing something citizens voted down just a few years ago? Also, our water rates just went up 18 percent. Our sewer rates went up 10 percent, and our school district is looking for $28 million in referendum. Council members need to seriously look at these items before voting in favor of increasing our taxes. I have more, but unfortunately, I had the 30-second stop thing there about 20 seconds ago, so I'm gonna have to stop there. Thanks.
It's a long to-do list. Mr. Cummings, your to-do list.
Okay, my to-do list is long too, but it really starts with economic development. We've heard a lot of discussion about that recently. The city council gave that as a goal to the city manager, economic development. And there are a lot of, economic development is almost like a stool. There's a lot of legs to prop up the seat. Maybe a bad choice of words, but. As I look at economic developments, and its industrial development, to me, is manufacturing. Last year, I, at my own expense, I visited a number of cities to, first of all, to meet with their preservation people, but I thought, well, I'm there, I might as well meet with their planners, developers, city managers, mayors, and so forth, and the conversations always wound up with industrial development. And I came out of this, you know, there are four, there are four components to what is in industrial development. One is land, and every community pretty much has some land, a skilled labor force, financial assistance from a governing body, city, state, county, but also quality of life. And this came out very strongly from the city manager of Athens, Georgia, which just brought in a 1,200-employee caterpillar plant. And as I talked to him, I said, we have, we have all, we have the land, we have the skilled workforce, we have financial assistance, we have a university, and we have a quality of life. So as I talk about that, there are a lot of things that affect that. The school system is critical to attracting industry to a community. Housing stock is very critical. And the one thing to keep in mind, and I have to be careful how I say this, and this, I'm quoting the city manager of Athens, Georgia, "In many cases, the spouse of the CEO will make the decision where that plant gets located." If the spouse doesn't like the school system, doesn't like the housing, doesn't like the cultural aspects of the city, the plant more than likely will not pull there. So everything that affects quality of life is also on my to-do, to-do list, but the goal is attracting industry to the community, because we've lost so much over the past decade and two decades. Thank you.
Mr. Clark, your to-do list.
My to-do list is, starts right here. This is a little handout that comes from the city. It is our strategic plan and our guiding principles. So without going into too much detail, using these can-do principles and the guiding principles that have been set forth in our strategic plan, I want to continue focusing on economic development. As Mr. Cummings has stated, there's a lot that goes on here. I think the most important part is building relationships, public-private partnerships that can use multiple funding sources to reduce the city's debt and to maximize our efficiency, working with our chambers of commerce, with our university, with the state and federal governments. Our aviation industrial park is approximately 50% funded by grant funding that comes from outside of the city of Oshkosh. We have to use critical thinking, and as part of this, we've drafted, we're starting to draft proposals for our debt management. We have sent a clear message to the city staff through our goals for the, for the city manager. Economic development is critical. Also, we have to manage our debt. We have to be smart with our money. It is important, as a representative, to be a steward of the taxpayers' money. The part that gets lost in this often is I pay taxes too. That money, every decision I make affects me just as much as it affects everyone else. We also sent a clear message when it came to city services. It's important. Our firefighters are in the budget because we deem them important. Citizen involvement is critical to a well-functioning government. Listening to our citizens is important. I have said from the beginning, to be a good representative, I need good fed feedback from the community. That's why there's not a whole lot of discussion at our council meetings, because we've taken the time ahead of time to prepare. We've read the materials. We've prepared, we've listened to our citizens, so we know what we need to do. Thank you.
And lastly, Mr. Becker, can we hear your to-do list?
I think it's first important, as I said in my opening statement, to define needs versus wants. I've had the opportunity since my name, I turned in my nomination paperwork, to talk with a number of citizens, and they share some of what I, what I've already, or what I will discuss here in a second. But with the definition of needs versus wants, the needs of the whole, the needs of the many, fire and police protection, properly functioning water and sewer systems, well-maintained and plowed streets, just to name a few, are needs. These should supersede the wants of the few. For example, and I'm not suggesting they be eliminated, but the wants of the few, funding of the Leach Amphitheater, funding of the Grand Opera House, funding of the community water park. I understand quality of life has been mentioned a number of times tonight. That does bring some value to a community. I won't argue that with you. It's debatable. But in tough economic times, tough choices need to be made. Alternate funding sources need to be explored. My second priority is the reorganization of this building. The city manager's office is directly in front of me, here on the fourth floor. I believe that to be a mistake. His office should be on ground floor, where he's accessible to the public. It's been mentioned a few times up here already. We need community involvement in this process. There's no other way to make it publicly available. If you want to see the city manager, you got to come up four flights of stairs or take an elevator ride. I also plan to take a serious, in-depth look at sitting, excuse me, city staffing and offer a new point of view, okay? I, I want to restore public confidence in city government by returning citizen statements in meetings to their true intent, which is to allow all citizens the opportunity to speak openly, honestly, and without censure about what actually concerns them.
That was the last of the questions that the League of Women Voters had submitted to these candidates, and we will now turn to questions that have come from the audience and that, that we have developed. And Margie is going to be the asker. So, Margie, fire away. Oh, I'm sorry, but only one minute. That way, we can get in as many questions as possible, so talk fast.
Are we asking for volunteer?
No.
Okay. The first question is, "Over a year ago, the city hired a consulting firm to evaluate Oshkosh Economic Development Organization and Services. What progress has been made in implementing the report's recommendations, and in your opinion, how should economic development be handled?" Let's start with Mr. Cummings.
Thank you. Again, from the trips I took and people I met with, those communities that are the most successful at economic development either have a department in-house on staff, or it's a public, public-private partnership. And in this process, you can't wait for people to come from you. It's a sales job. You have to define, for example, our aviation industrial park. We have to look for and define the companies that we want to court to come to the city of Oshkosh. If we determine, we're looking for a specific industry, we have to go and we have to attend trade shows and find out who those companies are. We need, we need people who understand what triggers the decision for a company to either stay in a community and expand or relocate to a community. So we have to have, it's like marketing a product. You have to have all the bells and whistles, all the things that encourage people to buy an automobile, for example. We have to think like those companies that may be looking to relocate. What are the benefits that we, as a city, offer them?
Who's next?
I'll go. Thank you. Your, the question was referencing the Prager Study. The Prager Study has gone out. We have now formed the GO E D C, which stands for the Go Economic Development Commission. That board, that group is actually meeting on Monday, the 17th, at Evergreen Manor. It's a combination of business leaders throughout the community in partnership with UW Oshkosh, other citizens that are involved in it, bringing ideas of how to work better with the Chamber of Commerce, how to work better with the CHAMCO, and how to put a marketing plan together to move Oshkosh forward in economic development. So the, the parameters of the study are being met and are going forward. It, it's taken some time, and we are continuing to meet and working on solutions to, to that, those issues. As Mr. Cummings brought, it's an all-inclusive, all-encompass, and we are moving forward with that.
Mr. Clark?
As, as Mr. Herman mentioned, the Greater, GO E D C, the Greater Oshkosh Economic Development Commission, has been meeting for almost a year now, and now we're gonna make that transition from talking to action. And so the, the public-private partnerships have been built between the Chamber of Commerce, CHAMCO, who is a, a marketing organization for our industrial parks, and the university and Fox Valley Tech, and a number of private business partners. So economic development, as it moves forward, already has a form. We need to direct its function. So now, we need to create an active marketing plan to encourage the development of our properties that are vacant within the city and targeting industries that we want here in Oshkosh, not only to bring companies here, but jobs and people. And these are jobs that'll require skills and, and can pay a living wage. When you bring those type of businesses When you bring those type of businesses into a community, you bring the community up.
Mr. Becker?
I, I would concur with a number of the other previous speakers. This is certainly, economic development is key to the city continuing to, to generate revenues. That's how the tax base grows, folks. And yes, it is a marketing job. I find it just the tiniest bit ironic that Mr. Cummings talks about marketing, though. He's had his own problems on that front, but...
He'll stick to the issue.
Well, and I appreciate that, Mrs. Mengeling, but the bigger part of that, in my opinion, is TIF districts. The city has awarded TIF districts over the years, some good, some bad. I'm proud to say that a few, a few of them are currently going to be coming off, are going to be closing out, which will return tax base or tax revenue to the taxing municipalities in the area. My plan to spur economic development, we need to actually look at what we, we grant for TIF dollars in this community. We've had some unsuccessful ones over the years. There's too many developers in this area that think it's a foregone conclusion they'll get TIF money if they ask. We need to actually ask for more concrete information from them and provide a, a higher standard to grant TIF dollars.
Mr. Eslinger?
Thank you. I am aware of the study that was undertaken. Now, I have not seen the full study, but I did see bits and pieces of it. My fear is, is like many studies that the city or any municipal entity does, it gets put on a shelf and it gets forgotten, and then, five years later, we'll spend more money for another study. But the thing we have to be worried about is, if we think that the government is here to solve our problems, the government is not here to solve our problems. Most of the time, it'll create the problems. However, I do think that the government can create situations to create jobs and economic development. And I'll take, for instance, the Oshkosh, Oshkosh Truck TIF that I was on the council and helped create, that, you know, we got a $3 billion contract from the federal government to help paint the vehicles for Oshkosh Truck to retain and recruit more individuals. So, if that's what we're looking for, for economic development, I'm all for it. But build-it-and-they-will-come scenarios, we saw what happened on Jackson Street years ago. We lost a lot of jobs over there, and we still don't have the economic development we were promised.
Ms. Pansky?
Well, as far as economic development, how it's handled, obviously, the better we make our, more better we make our community, the more appeal we will have to large corporations, more companies and industry. I do agree that is a, an active marketing project. We do have to keep on top of these things. But more importantly, I think we have to make our community members happy and want to stay here, want to work here. There are many people in, in my generation that don't care anymore. They don't want to work, you know? They want to sit at home and play on the computer or sleep, who knows? But keeping our community members happy and healthy and active in the workforce, I think, is, is a good starting point.
Next, we have a question from the audience.
This question is, "What is the city's role in revitalizing the Pioneer Inn property?" A volunteer?
It's, well, okay. One at a time. Mr. Becker?
The, the Pioneer Property, and I had this conversation actually earlier today with the folks at the, the Oshkosh Northwestern. It's an eyesore. I think we can all agree. It's long, long past time something been done with the Pioneer Property. I would encourage the city council and whatever members it, it comprises at, after April 1st, to exert as much pressure as they possibly can, along with the city manager and the owner of that property, to move forward or sell it to someone that will actually do something with it. It's an eyesore. We need to deal with it. It's long past its...
I think Mr. Eslinger's hand went up a split second.
Thanks. Well, when I was mayor, I did sit down and talk with the owner of the property, Mr. Kira Lieber. It is owned by a private citizen, myself, council member Palmieri, the city manager and the community development director, and we all expressed our displeasure with what was going on. The gentleman told us that he was undertaking a project in Florida, building a multimillion-dollar facility there. He said that, coupled with the terrible economy that we have, it was not feasible, is not feasible for him to build anything on that property. Unfortunately, I expressed that there were eyesore issues that needed to be addressed, to which he agreed, and said that that was going to take place. Since then, we all have seen that they were not addressed, and I applaud Mr. Cummings, actually, in the last year or so, as kind of said, hey, you didn't do what you say, what you said you were going to do, and brought that issue up. So, I think the city staff is in front of his face again, telling him he needs to do something with it. So, I think unfortunately, the city's role in that, as of right now, is very limited.
Ms. Pansky?
Yes, I would agree with what Mr. Eslinger said, that if it's not our property, what can we do with it? I do remember going to the Pioneer Inn when I was younger. It was absolutely beautiful. I mean, I can imagine even just a park out there for, for the community benefit would be absolutely wonderful. But if it's not ours, there's really not a whole lot we can do with it. So, I would agree with Mr. Becker that a little bit of pressure might be in order.
Mr. Clark?
The, to speak from the council's perspective, we are actively pursuing the challenges on that property. We have sent a letter to the individual who owns the property about nuisance violations and continued violations on the property. We are continuously remaining in contact to try and create opportunity to develop on that property. However, the property is in private hands. That extremely limits what the city can do, and that's a good thing and a bad thing, because the, the rights of an individual are important. But as you can see, it's a gateway to our community, and it's important for the city to continue to pursue either the sale or redevelopment of this property. It's important for us to continue, to build the relationship, to hope to get this property developed soon. Unfortunately, the city's role in that is very limited due to state, federal, and local laws. Thank you.
Mr. Cummings, since you did an investigation?
Yes, I did. And I, too, have met, met with Mr. Kira Lieber, I think, as long as three years ago, with the city manager, community development director, and we expressed our interest in working with him, whatever we could do to get the Pioneer up and running. He seemed agreeable, but then he had some difficulties with properties. He was building in Florida Hotel or whatever. When we took our boat around the property with the city manager, community development director, inspectors, we got a chance to look at the property from the waterside. And my son, who worked there, you know, he had a pretty good perspective on what's happened. I mean, the harbor is, is extremely silted and docks are falling apart. As I said in that newspaper article, there's kind of three scenarios. Either the current owner redeveloped it, or he sells it to somebody who will develop it. It becomes a public-private partnership, or the city acquire it as a park property. It's been done successfully. Other areas where the, the city would lease out, or someone would run the harbor, in Milwaukee, there's a group that has a lot of park buildings that are restaurants. So, there are a lot of ways to do this, and we have retained the Business Success Center at the university to, to do a research project on the feasibility of these three different types of scenarios. So, we're taking a very, as active a role we can, considering we don't own the property.
Mr. Herman?
Thank you. Council members have pretty much answered the question. We, we are, it, it comes onto our agenda almost monthly, where are we at with the, with the Pioneer Property? You know, part of the issue, too, is, is we all know how wonderful that property was at one time. He's not an Oshkosh citizen. He doesn't live here. So, he has no real history of the property and how that whole property was, you know, revered by all the citizens of Oshkosh and in its heyday, how good it was. But we continue, as, as Mr. Clark mentioned, you know, we have filed a letter with him on the violations, and we are pursuing fining him, and it will go onto his taxes so that we can collect. So, yeah, because we don't own it. We are also working, though, as part of our Riverwalk Plan, we will have the Riverwalk by there. But unless he does something, I would not support putting taxpayer dollars towards the Riverwalk until he does improve the property. So, we're hoping the economy continues to improve and that he will take a relook at it, and we'll have a plan to help him at that point. Thank you.
Good. Margie, our next question.
This one is generated by the League. "The city has a sustainability advisory board, and the council adopted a sustainability plan in May of 2012. What will you do to promote sustainability in our community?" And could we start with Mr. Becker with this one?
How about it, Mr. Becker?
Caught me on my heels. Sustainability, whether it be preserving historic architecture, whether it be recycling, I mean, you can, you can take this in so many different directions. We all live on the same big blue rock, folks. We need to do what we can to preserve it. And I know, again, I, I realize this sounds cliche, but there's a limited number of resources available to us. We need to be conservative, there's that word, yep, I used it, in what we use and how we use it, to make sure that we can actually maintain a standard of living, whether that be through natural resources, housing, whatever the case may be. But ironically, you know, there's only so many widgets, so many, so many items to be used. There's finite resources. No matter what you look at, they need to be conserved.
Ms. Pansky?
I think by leading by example is a great place to start, making sure that all of us are doing our part and helping out the people who might not be able to or might be a little reluctant to. I know with the $20 recycling fee, I had a few people just throw their arms up and say, well, I'm not going to recycle anymore. It's horrible. Such an easy thing to do. Why not? Say, all right, if you're not going to, then, you know, I'll, I'll help you out. Pay the $20 fee. I went, I came down here and paid it myself, you know? If I have to pay for those services, I was very unhappy when that happened, but if it's my part, if it's something that I can do to help our community, our planet, why not? It's $20. Thank you.
Mr. Clark?
The city is actively involved in implementing our sustainability plan. First and foremost, we switched our garbage trucks over to compressed natural gas. That helps reduce our carbon emissions. It also makes our trucks more efficient and use less fuel. That saves the taxpayers' money, because the compressed natural gas is $1.79 a gallon compared to just about $4 for diesel. The city garage that you see being built over on Whittle Street is being built to lead Silver Certification. It's being built to be energy-efficient, to help reduce our costs long-term, but also to help implement our sustainability plan. Something that gets lost in sustainability is stormwater management. Our stormwater program is actively attempting to reduce the pollution that makes it into our lakes and streams, and through that reduction in pollution, makes our rivers and lakes a sustainable resource, because our drinking water comes from those same resources. We just installed a brand-new heating and ventilation and air conditioning system at the museum to replace the old boiler system that is much, much more efficient. So, active management.
Mr. Cummings?
Thank you. From my take on the sustainability is the work we're doing through Neighborhoods, the Healthy Neighborhood Initiative. As we go into these older neighborhoods, you know, and we're collaborating with Habitat for Humanity, rather than level homes, if, unless they're beyond help, to rehab the homes. We're not taking the home and all its parts and pieces to a landfill. We're rehabbing the home. We're also looking in these older areas to put in more green space through pocket parks. If a home does have to come down, the lots are too small to really build anything, let's make it a park. We're working with the Middle Village over here to put in community gardens in some of these vacant lots. So, again, that's all a part of the sustainability, getting more of the, taking root program, growing on some of these areas where so many trees have come down over the, the past decade or so, and getting new trees put in. I've talked to the public service and the Parks Department, or City Forester, can we develop a program where we help people with, manage the trees on their own property? Type of thing, so.
Mr. Herman?
Thank you. Just a, a little more off of what Mr. Clark was saying, besides the garbage trucks, we are also, our utility vehicles, the yellow pickup trucks and things that you see driving around town, are all going to go to compressed natural gas, so that's another savings and, and good for the environment. We continue to get updates from the Sustainability Board on what they're working on. Several of their resolutions have come in front of the council. Council has supported them. We have a council representative that sits on the Sustainability Board, so that we are given updates of what is happening there. So, I think the big picture is smart growth principles, working, as Mr. Cummings said, in our neighborhoods to rehab homes instead of tearing homes down unless we absolutely have to, to focus on the single-stream recycling. That was a unfunded mandate from the state of Wisconsin. They cut us $400,000. We had no option but to impose the $20 fee, or we would have lost our single-stream recycling. So, sometimes, unfunded mandates from the state makes us do things differently also.
Lastly, Mr. Eslinger?
Thank you. You know, I think sustainability is a multifaceted issue. There are many, many things to it. And, you know, if someone looks at something to be sustainable in a fiscally responsible manner, I'm all for it. You know, we talked about the garbage trucks, turning those into different, different ways to run them. That makes sense. But if we're looking at doing something sustainable where the payoff is in 20 to 30 years and the cost is extremely expensive upfront, just to further our political agenda, I think, is not where we need to go. I was very concerned recently where the Sustainability Board was going to tell the city not to invest in fossil fuel stocks. You know, with all due respect to the folks on that board, I don't know if they have any education in financing money. As we've all talked about, our debt is huge, and if those stocks, if they're legal stocks and they gain us the most amount of money, then that's what we need to do. So, fiscally responsibly, looking at sustainable issues, great, but if it's a political agenda, then I don't think it's appropriate.
Thank you. Our next question, Margie.
This is an audience question. "Last July, when Courthouse was left without air conditioning, its residents were told to go to public buildings to escape the heat. Many bus stops have been eliminated near medical facilities and shopping centers. These are just two examples of ways the city exhibits insensitivity to its elderly and disabled. How would you address this?"
Mr. Clark?
First and foremost, I'm going to focus on the, the transit side of that. As the council's representative to the Transit Advisory Committee, I'm proud to, to reiterate the fact that we have restored service, doorstop service, to the medical facilities here in Oshkosh, primarily the two hospitals. And that was important, to restore that service, to maintain our service for our disabled and our elderly and those that rely on public transportation. The unfortunate reality of the Courthouse project, the fact that we have public buildings that we can utilize to help those people is important, and to maintain those as public spaces, where people can use the resources of a public building. We have a wonderful library that we can utilize in situations that need to, where people need to spend long periods of time. We also have a city building here that's accessible during business hours. You can come here and meet your city leaders. You can come here and talk to the department heads if you have an issue. And so, it's important to maintain those resources for those individuals.
Who's next? Mr. Eslinger?
Thank you. I stated earlier that, you know, I think the city government should focus on the things that it should, it should fund, police fire and infrastructure, but one thing unfortunately I didn't say, and I should have, are the senior citizens. If it weren't for the senior citizens that we have, we would not have the great country that we do. You know, we do have a senior center that I think is second to none. I've donated a lot of money there, because I, I believe in the senior center. But, you know, these, these traffic issue, traffic issues have come up in the past, where we were not, the city was not plowing out some of these stops where senior citizens and, and disabled individuals got on. And when I was on the council, we expressed to the city manager, that's unacceptable. You know, these, these folks need as much help as they can get, and if we're going to worry about spending a few extra dollars so we can have a person going around cleaning out these areas, I'm all for spending money for those folks.
Mr. Herman?
Thank you. The Transit Advisory Board is the one that brought forward the, the changes in the bus routes and the bus locations. We gave it a few months. It wasn't working the way we wanted it to work. So, the council did take the necessary steps, as Mr. Clark said, to change some of the routes, get back into the parking lots where we needed to be, get the seniors to the hospitals and to their doctor's appointments. The Courthouse issue is, is a unique situation in a sense, because the Oshkosh Health and Th... The Court Tower issue is a unique situation, in a sense, because the Oshkosh Housing Authority is not under the city of Oshkosh. It's a separate entity. Even though it says Oshkosh Housing Authority and Winnabeal County, it's a joint venture, but they are not part of the city, not part of our budget. That being said, when we heard the concerns, heard some of the problems, that's when the council acted and told Mr. Roloff to open up some of the public places that are available for seniors to go to, and others with disabilities. So I think we do address issues. We work closely with the senior center. We, quite a few councilmembers go to senior events and activities there. So we are concerned about our seniors in our community, and we are looking at improving things in the Oshkosh area for all seniors.
Just a quick comment. It just goes to show you how important it is to be available and to listen to our community members, whether they are in their 80s or if they're eight.
Mr. Cummings?
Thank you. As Mr. Herman said, once we became aware of what was happening at the, at Court Tower and so forth, we did intervene. As Mr. Herman said, we have no control over the Oshkosh Housing Authority. But they listened to our concerns. We opened up buildings, so people had someplace to go in this tremendous heat. As to the bus routes, we had a lot of citizens come to council meetings, express their concern over the new routes, the difficulty with getting to, into a hospital from where the drop-off points were. So we did revive, we turned the routes back to where they had been, so it was more convenient for seniors and the disabled. So we did listen, and we have intervened, and I think in the case of the Transit Authority, it was more of a numbers situation with the routes, and we said, you know, logic has to prevail. We have to provide a service to these people.
Mr. Becker?
I'm proud, as part of my role on the Traffic Review Advisory Board, to have played a small part in returning those stops to the hospitals. I think it was the right thing to do. As was already said, there was a lot of comment at the council level, and in fact, I think there was some comment at Traffic Review as well, because that's one of the things Traffic Review oversees in a limited capacity. As far as the situation at Court Tower, Court Towers actually came around, it was the right thing to do. I mean, there's no doubt about that. I don't think we had any other choice. It's called being a good neighbor. It's called being a good citizen, a good resident of the community. If you've got the facility, you've got the availability, you make it available. I think we did the right thing. We didn't have any other choice. It's the right thing to do.
We're going to try to squeeze in two more questions. So, Margie, fire away.
Okay. This question, listen carefully, and you'll be able to answer in two sentences.
Promise?
The city adopted a 2012 through 14 strategic plan. The four external goals were to maintain and improve our infrastructure, support business economic development, strengthen neighborhoods, and improve our quality of life assets. Are there any of these with which you disagree? Which is the most important goal, in your opinion?
Mr. Becker?
The most important one, I think, is economic development, because it lets us do so many other things with the additional tax base and the ensuing additional tax revenue. Quality of life, again, that goes back to the comment I made earlier. We first need to define needs versus wants. A quality of life issue to one person is drastically different than the quality of life issue to another. That's where it becomes difficult to quantify.
Mr. Cummings?
Obviously, I agree with them, because I was part of the strategic planning process. The most critical, again, is economic development, and I define that by industrial manufacturing development, because it's higher-paying jobs with sustainable benefit packages. Some of the other things, quality of life, those are all the legs on the stool that support economic development. And I think a lot of times, we get confused, the term economic development, and once we have the industry here, the manufacturing, the high-paying jobs, all the other things will follow. The chains that come, the restaurants, the retailers, those companies, McDonald's of this world, they have people out there looking for places to put a building. And we're not going to convince them to come to Oshkosh. They will come to Oshkosh when we have the numbers, both population and income. So the focus has to be on the industrial manufacturing development. I did it.
Mr. Herman?
Thank you. As Mr. Cummings said, I was part of that, approving those plans. I think economic development is the important piece, but also maintaining our streets, maintaining our neighborhoods, maintaining the quality of life that the citizens of Oshkosh expect from their government. I think that's important. But on the economic development side, it's more than just bringing in that business. We have to have residential properties for them. We have to have good schools for them. We have to have good infrastructure. We have to have good parks. We have to have a reason for them to come to Oshkosh. What makes Oshkosh better than Appleton, or Nina, Manasha, Fond du Lac? So we have to have, the big picture is not just bringing the business here, but selling them Oshkosh. We worked with the Chamber of Commerce to develop Opportunity Oshkosh, to show business leaders and business owners what there is to have and what's available in the Oshkosh area. So I think that's really important. So economic development is important, but so is saving our city and making it the best it can be.
Mr. Clark?
I find it funny that we're talking about the little card that I held up earlier in this meeting. There's a reason that those were chosen as the priorities, because they view them, and I view them, as a package. To have economic development, you need to have housing stock. To have economic development, you need to have a well-run infrastructure. If you're going to focus on quality of life, you need to have jobs that support a quality of life. These are all one, one A, one B. It's important, and they're all on the same playing field. It's important to have the infrastructure, because if you don't have the infrastructure to support the development, the development won't succeed. If you're going to build successful, long-lasting businesses, you have to retain the businesses you have and grow the businesses that grow in your community. You need a blend of large manufacturing and also small business owners. You need to have people invested in this community, because they grew up here, they live here, they work here, and they want to play in the same community.
Mr. Eslinger?
Thank you. While I think it's certainly important that we ask this question to a council member or potential council members, I think the thing that we need to, us up here, need to understand and remember, the opinion that's more, most important, is the citizen's opinion. And we've sent out surveys, numerous surveys in the past, and I believe all four of these things have come up in these surveys, and just thinking off the top of my head, infrastructure and development are one and two. I don't know which one is which, but they're one and two. And neighborhoods and quality of life are certainly things that are important. So I think while our opinions are important, you know, when we're on the council, we need to look at those surveys, talk to people in the community, and listen to their opinion and vote accordingly.
Ms. Pansky?
Well, obviously, I think that all four of these topics go hand in hand. You really can't have one without the other. We do have to support each other in these aspects. When you do have these small businesses here in town that have been here for 30, 40, 60, 70 years, you need to support these people. It all comes right back around to us. Small business is something that's very important to me. My parents have had theirs for 32 years. My uncle has a small business here. My boyfriend has his own business here. In order to support each other, we need to support these businesses, and that obviously includes, or increases, that quality of life. If everybody's helping each other out, what can go wrong?
We have a very short question, and we're pressed for time. So try to answer this in 10, 15 seconds. You can do it!
Is this yes or no?
This is a yes or no question. Steve, thank you for asking. Yes, this is an audience question that can be answered in one word. Do you think it's a good idea to run 20th Street through to South Main Street?
Who answers that? Mr. Eslinger?
No.
Mr. Herman?
No.
Ms. Pansky?
No.
Mr. Cummings?
No.
Mr. Clark?
No.
Mr. Becker?
Like a council meeting, no.
We did our homework.
That one would require acquiring and demolishing private homes. That's not what this council's about. It's not what this city is about.
And that's why we did South Park Street the way we did, so we didn't have to do that.
Yep.
Okay. I'll think of that when I go down South Park on my way home. This concludes the city council portion of this form. The election is Tuesday, April 1st. The polls are open from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., and you may register to vote at the polling place on Election Day, if you haven't already done so. No photo, no photo ID is required. You may vote for no more than three city council candidates. On behalf of the League of Women Voters, Oshkosh Community Media Services Television, City Cable 10, and Community Radio W O C T 101.9 FM, I want to thank all the candidates, Ann Marshall, and Margie Davy for participating in this forum. And finally, thanks to our audience in the studio, and to those tuning in via television, radio, or video streaming. Our democracy depends on citizen involvement. Please vote on April 1st.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. [music]